All the meeting order declared we got a quorum minus two commissioners. I'll open this with a word of prayer. Don, keep your seat. Heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity that we could have to serve the citizens of this county. Lord, ask a blessing on everybody that's here. I ask a blessing on those that aren't able to make it due to sickness. Lord, thank you for taking care of Robert and just to continue to guide that issue. Lord, thank you for taking care of Ronnie and issue with his family. And Lord, we just ask that you give us the direction that you want us to take so that we can put your business first. In Christ's name, we pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so we're not... So we're gonna skip all the top stuff then since already it's not here. Uh, let's go to burn ban. I've heard from three of the chiefs and the three chiefs said they didn't want the burn ban coming off, so. Now there's a chance of rain after this. Hey Ginger, when's our next meeting?
Next Monday.
It's like we have one every week.
Well, no. Probably a special on the third, but for the most part it depends. I can put it on the third if I need to.
Okay, anyway, we'll just leave the, uh, if everybody's okay, that we will leave it on?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we will skip B. Uh, consider and take action on hardware recycling. And consider and take action on hard drive destruction. Both of these were Sam Goldsmith. What were we doing on this Ginger?
Judge, I think, and maybe not, but I think those are computers and hard drives that I have previously come to y'all on. I don't know, because he came over and I still had a stack of them in the closet.
E, discussing concerns regarding the Rising Star brush pile, Larry Chambers, is that you, Mr. Chambers? Okay, you've got a few minutes?
Yes. I don't, uh, I live right across from the county lot and we, uh, of course, when the burning first started, it wasn't quite as bad because it was, piles were smaller. But now you're getting more and more, uh, brush, more and more, um, debris. And these are just some pictures of what's currently out there. I think only made by, uh, the, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you.
Sure, Mr. Wilson, with the, the bookworm.
Thanks, Mr. Chambers. And, uh, I forgot another. Yeah. But, you know, it's, people are starting to, uh, just make a dump ground out of it basically. And, and then when, when they burn it, of course, you've got all of the, uh, all of the smoke from, I mean, there's, you can see there's mattresses, there's sofas, there's tires. There, you know, it's, it's not just brush. And when you, when you take and get all that burned, then you go and, uh, have the ash or whatever, you've got all that metal in there. And Ronnie has got a pile at the back of precinct three of metal and, uh, you know, it's just, it's just a mix, uh, of metal and dirt. You know, you've got companies coming in, of course, you've got people coming in from not only Eastland County. You got Brown County, Callahan, Comanche County, everybody comes in. And then you've also got the, uh, the tree trimming people. All of, there's one of the pictures, or maybe two of the pictures there, that where they're dumping the chops.
Yeah.
And man, you talk about smoke, uh, because of green, you know, a lot of them are green. And they, matter of fact, the last time they burned was about five weeks ago. And up until last week, it was still smoking. And, uh, you know, when that wind, no matter which way the wind's out of, somebody gets, and so I would like, uh, to, uh, see that the burning stopped. And it's not gonna be an easy thing to do because that ground's not secure. I mean, there's people over there in the middle of the night, uh, weekends, uh, you know. I've seen pickups come in there just rounded with trash bags. And, uh, burned all one sudden the afternoon, just burning, you know, one of the piles would be going, so they're just dumping them. You know, it's, uh, and it's, and it's not just me. I mean, there's other people around, uh, the Clint Wolf, Need a Self, I guess, the Hollises, the Owens, uh, and Ronnie may know more that may have talked to him, I don't know.
Pretty much all Rising Stars don't like it because of the smoke.
Yeah, I mean, it's, uh, when it's, when it's still and settled, I mean, you know, like our house, it'll fill our house, you know, our clothes smell like it, our inside of our cars smell like it. I mean, there's just no way, no way to get away from it. And, uh, you know, that's the reason, and of course, all of the tree trimming people, there's, I think, four that dumped there. Ashburn, Wright, Horton, and Morris, I know those four dumped there. And, uh, they, they get paid to take it to a landfill or, they get paid to take it somewhere. So there's no reason for them to dump that anyway. But, I mean, that's kinda, you know, the way I look at it, you know, what I see. Like I said, I'm not sure, you know, just because y'all come up and say, hey, we're not gonna burn anymore. I'm not exactly sure how you're gonna stop. If the businesses, you can stop, but I think they'll stop. But individuals, unless the sheriff's department or somebody makes a circle by every once in a while. And, you know, because that's a, you know, it's a public entity. And it's littering, uh, if, if it's not supposed to be dumped, or, you know, if there's not supposed to be any dump in there. But, uh, I mean, that's, that's kinda what I've got. If y'all got questions, I mean, I'd be glad to answer them.
What's your solution, Mr. Chambers?
Well, I think it needs to stop. Uh, I mean,
But I understand that. I'm talking about your solutions about what to do with all the other stuff.
Uh, you talking about the dirt that's there or, uh?
I didn't know the dirt was the issue. What's the issue with the dirt?
Uh, there's, uh, the dirt that's, that's been moved. And you can see some of those piles that are burnt in one of those pictures. There's bed springs in them, there's pieces of metal in them, uh, you know. And the county is just taking and scooping them up and taking them to the back of their dens and dumping them. And they've got, I don't know, uh, almost tall as this ceiling. So I don't, I don't know what they're gonna do with that anyway. But, uh,
But the dirt part doesn't affect you though?
No, it doesn't affect me.
That's, that's, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it, it doesn't affect me, uh, but it does affect the precinct three because they have to move, they have to put manpower into it to do something with it. And, you know, I don't know exactly what they're gonna end up doing. But, uh, but, you know, all of that, uh, you know, the trash blowing, uh, you know, it's, it's basically a dump ground. Is what that area is right now.
And you have signs up that say brush only because you had them made.
So people's even put on Facebook, please don't, don't brush or trash out there because y'all are gonna ruin it for everybody else. I've seen that. Sheriff's Department has went out there and tried to patrol it and keep them from doing it, you know. The deal is if they don't throw it there, they're gonna go throw it in our ditches, but we'll just have to go pick it up, uh, you know.
Is this a concern?
It is, but I think it happens at every precinct where people throw stuff out. I don't know where y'all pick y'all's, helps people, but then people's really, really took advantage of it. And like Mr. Chambers said, them tree trimmers are putting them chips in there and, and I mean, it smokes like you wouldn't believe. And ever since the chip deal started, I've, what happened was the liquor companies had to get tree trimmers in here because they was supposedly responsible. And ever since then, all that's come to us. And today, in two minutes, it's gonna be blowing towards the east and then it's gonna burn. I've, say, hey, we better stop it because it is helping people. And then again, it is not helping people.
It is a tremendous liability to light a bonfire every month. Not only that, technically you've got a way to put a fence up.
Yeah, I think, you know, we can put a fence up. That won't be no problem. We don't have to, you know, my, top rail around it and, Oh, really?
Yeah.
You know, put legs and put a top rail that'll keep people from driving in or they'll, like crazy, the highway.
Flip it over on the side.
Yeah, aside. They'll just take our fence. We just need to make something we can put back if that's what the court decided.
The, the tree trimmers are using it as a dumping ground. So I think that needs to stop. And then we, if we can get the sheriff's office to make sure that there's people not dumping out there.
Is the backside fence stopped before we bid the pad?
Or, you know, you're still gonna end up with a lot of smoke. It is probably out of Callahan and Comanche County.
Yeah.
I know Callahan, the city of Cross Plains, what they do is they have a place out in the country somewhere. I so, I so do. It's been going on, Judge, and we can't, we can't.
Can't stop it.
We can't stop it.
Well, the first thing I think is we need to put fence up where we control.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Do you need a motion? Do you want a motion that says, we're gonna stop this? Go ahead and start with a fence? Type deal, that way? Is that, I mean, I'm as.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a starting point for sure. Are we cutting it out for good? Are we gonna do?
If you cut it out, you need to cut it out for good. It needs to be done.
Right.
Because otherwise you're gonna be fighting the battle that you can't win. I mean, it, it is, it is or it isn't. I mean, that's the way basically it is. Because if you, if you don't, then you're gonna have, you're gonna have to stand out there in the, with a little orange vest on, checking people in and out.
We don't need to do that.
Yeah.
We don't have time.
Yeah.
I think that's a good start though, start with the fence and the gate. Get the things stopped, put the word out.
Yeah.
Locally that that's not gonna, that's not gonna happen anymore.
Well, yeah, and that's what you said, you know, you may have to have another sign made that said, we're no longer having a burn pile or no longer accepting stuff.
I think it'd be good.
And put it on the gate.
Yeah.
But until you put the fence up, you're not gonna have, they're gonna go around.
Right.
So until you get the gates and the fence up, it's not gonna stop.
It shouldn't take too long for that.
So you want a motion to say that, basically that the burn pile at Rising Star Precinct Three Barn is no longer accepting brush? And that the fence will be erected?
And no household goods.
And no household goods.
Yeah.
So no longer accepting brush?
Yeah.
Or household?
Yeah. I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Judge.
All those, the pair say aye. Both same sign, motion carries. We're going with Mr. Chambers. It's gonna be a process, so.
Well, I understand that.
Ain't gonna happen today.
I mean, even the brush that's there now, I mean, it, it, the burn ban's also, it's still gonna be there.
And allow a bit of a fence.
It rains, uh, because I'm assuming that you will go ahead and probably,
Get it, get it burnt, get everything cleaned up.
One thing I might ask though, on those, the, the chips that are there now from the tree trimming people, can Dusty take and pick some of them up and spread them out on that bigger burn pile? So that they're not concentrated. Uh, I know that's work to do that, but it, it, it would keep it from, you know, when you got a pile as tall as the ceiling, uh, it's gonna take a while to burn it down.
We have a man that, that was coming and picking them up, Larry, and I may contact him. And if he's wanting them, we'll tell him, come on out there and let's get them off there and we'll be done with that. And we won't burn them because it is terrible when you burn them.
Uh, are there only four tree trimming people?
As far as I know right now.
That's the only ones I could think of.
That's a bunch.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's many chips. They're dumping at least once or twice a week each time. Yes, sir. Yeah, we will definitely try not burn the chips this round. We will try to get them hauled off somewhere.
Alright. Alright, uh, let's go and go to F. Present activities both justice courts from October twenty-three till President Tyler. Judge Glenn.
So after sitting on the phone with Tyler, talking me through this a couple of weeks ago, these are our numbers since we've been on Tyler, uh, Jan-, uh, October, from October first to twenty-three till, excuse me, uh, the fourteenth. Precinct one, uh, just, it's just our total numbers that we've had administrative hearings, two, one hundred and sixty-three debt claims, seven driver's license suspension hearings, uh, fifty-nine evictions, two garnishments, six hundred and fifty-nine magistrate ones. That's six hundred and fifty-nine people I got to see in jail. And then small claim suits is twenty-two for a grand total of nine fourteen. And then, uh, our hearings, I just got over something. I apologize. I just can't, can't kick this cough. The citations, uh, one thousand four hundred and fifty-five, uh, those are like, uh, speeding tickets. Uh, complaint affidavit are a warrant, so that's four hundred and ninety-three. Then our juvenile numbers, four, three, uh, magistrate cases. I'm not exactly sure what that was, but Tyler, hopefully you talk me through this better next time. And then I have one truancy hearing. And then, uh, I had forty-three inquests during that timeframe and thirty-one, uh, mental health hearings.
Do you feel like Judge, this is a pretty accurate reflection of what you guys did?
There's a few questions I have. I might have, they might not have understood what I was asking for when I, uh, asked them to help me build this list, so I'm gonna refine it a little bit more and the next time I report, hopefully I'll have some more concrete. But this is roughly, I would say it's, it's pretty accurate since twenty-three.
Okay, and we, you said it's from October twenty-three?
October first, twenty twenty-three till January fourteenth of twenty twenty-five. It's in the top left corner.
Alright, got it. Thank you.
You can just look in that same category of, it's still me reading every one of them off again, that the ones that I've done, it's the same. I mean, they were different in some cases, but, uh,
Bless you.
Judge Glenn, yours, uh, Judge Spear had seven driver's license suspension hearings. Did you not have any during that time period?
Yes, I had seven as well.
Well, I'm not seeing it on.
Uh, Judge.
Oh, okay, I'm the wrong one, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, he's got the, yeah, he's got the.
You had them, Judge Spear didn't have them. So you didn't have any during this time period? That's the reason I was asking because I would think that that would be something that both judges would hear that may have slipped off the radar. If you don't, if you're saying you didn't have any, that's fine.
When we, uh, well, when they bring the cases to hear from, well, from Candy that comes from the DPS office, it's usually in his court.
Hmm, okay.
Judge Glenn, I know it says twenty-three, but y'all haven't been on Tyler since twenty-three, have you?
Uh, I was thinking, I thought it was October twenty-three.
Twenty-four.
No.
Twenty-three, that's right, it was twenty-three.
We started in May of twenty-three, so I started.
No, we started on, oh, I'm sorry.
We started in May of twenty-three.
Financial. That's right, twenty-three, yeah.
Okay, uh, so, I mean, for the most part, this is just a report only? You guys are not, do we need to take action on this?
Except it.
Okay, we take, entertain a motion, except both the justice of the pieces, uh, reports. Listen by Robert, second by Ronnie. All those, the pair say aye. Aye. Both same sign.
Please don't want you thinking we're down there to live in our homes.
Well, we thought that anyway. This could have been, these are all just fictitious numbers for all we know. Alright, G, discuss, consider JP Off's moving annex to Judge Glenn.
Uh, like I said, I wasn't prepared that last time, so, uh, just some of the pros I have for moving over there would be improved security, uh, more room for storage of files and, uh, till destruction dates, uh, extra office space for, um, Tracy and our part timer whenever we get that. Uh, less chance of flooding, uh, proper jury room. Instead of us having to lock our computers and desks up and moving chairs, uh, we could actually have a, a jury room. And then, uh, less public direct access, uh, not that it's a bad thing, but right now, if, if somebody just walks in our office and wants to go speak to myself or Judge Spear, if, uh, Tracy doesn't stop them, all they gotta do is pass the swinging door and they're back there. Plus for a security reason, um, I think we have maybe once every two weeks where we don't take in any money, but at any time, there's usually a lot, a substantial amount of money in there. And if somebody wants to come inside, they can come in that door. It's, that glass door's a suggestion. Whereas the, uh, the tax office over there still had all those magnetic locks in, uh, the windows. I mean, they're not ballistic windows, but it's, it's a deterrent.
Okay, well, the first thing you said was the, uh, was the increased security. Is that what you said?
Improved security.
Improved security. What, why, why is that improved security over there?
Uh, the magnetic locks and the magnetic doors.
Okay.
It's already, instead of rebuilding our courtroom to make a, oh, access window, it's already got it.
Yeah, well, what I, I'm not speaking for the commissioners and stuff, but I, what I'm still needing is the, what's it's gonna cost us deal.
Okay.
That's what, when I saw you on the deal, I thought that's what that was gonna be.
Okay, well, I misunderstood. I was thinking it was gonna be, uh, pros and cons of moving over there. I'm not exactly sure on the cost, but as far as moving, I mean, I have no issue with lugging stuff over there myself.
Moving wise, I mean, besides what, phone and internet, is that anything else that, I mean, that's really all you're gonna need?
That's the only thing I can think of.
Well, potentially at some point, I think sheriff wants to put some cameras over there or something and, I don't know. But sheriff, do you have any comments?
We got a court over there that we did have some kind of cameras and all the, the access control that he's talking about, all has to be swapped out. We don't have access to that. It needs to be swapped out and put onto our system, the network, the network needs to be tied in.
You said it was five doors?
Five doors.
Five access doors over there that, that take a putt or whatever. So that, well, and we, he's, you've gotta figure all that out too.
Yeah.
So there's some, again, there's some, some costs associated with that.
Electronic pot swapping. I mean, there's no, no physical construction is what I'm getting at. You're not moving a wall, you're not tearing down a window type deal. It's all electrical basically. Correct. Is what we're talking about.
Yeah, we're just, if you can give us those, at least an estimate.
Don't even lick his fingers and say, yep, that one's hot.
We just need kind of an estimate, Judge, of about, before we, before we move. But, I mean, I appreciate the pros and cons, but that's kinda what I was looking for was the,
Okay.
The cost. That's the biggest con or pro for me is the cost. Alright, thank you, Judge. Hope you get feeling better. Okay, let's just keep going to where we're going. Discuss and consider sign a resolution opposing the elimination of countywide polling places, Ms. Rogers.
I got it. I printed it already.
Oh, I have it. Thank you. We are in the legislative session for elections again. And they're wanting to do away with countywide polling places, electronic poll books, and the electronic voting equipment. Yeah.
You're willing to do away with it?
Yep.
How are you gonna vote?
Paper.
Paper on election day.
Hand counted paper ballots in precinct based, so I'm gonna let, if this passes in the legislature, I'm gonna let them explain to the people that live out by the woodlands why they have to drive to Rising Star to go vote.
Yeah.
And we just didn't have a million dollars on that equipment. All the counties did, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that don't make no sense.
Well, neither do do in a way with straight tickets, but sometimes they don't do things that make sense.
So, and I'm trying to be nice, y'all.
Oh, I'm not.
So where did this resolution come from?
Y'all's association or who's putting forth the resolution?
Just a group of EAs, yeah.
Was it like two or three or?
No, it's statewide. Statewide. Not everybody in the state is countywide, but everybody that is countywide is putting forth this resolution. It's gonna be sent to our legislature and hopefully they'll listen, but the way things are turning right now, it doesn't, it's a fifty-fifty shot. But even the counties that are not countywide are putting in a resolution saying, although we don't participate in this, we support this. And our voters, you know, across the state definitely support this. We've gotten so many phone calls. Thank y'all so much, you know, that we don't have to drive, you know, we work in Abilene, we live in Ranger, we don't have to drive clear to Ranger to vote. We can stop at Cisco and do it and.
Well, I mean, what, this last cycle round, people here went to Cisco to vote so they didn't have to wait in line.
Right. Well, yeah, and that really cut down a lot. But early voting, it is, anybody can come to the early voting thing. But on election day, that really cut down on the lines too, so.
Has anybody from the DA's office looked at this?
No.
Okay.
Do you want me to read it? I mean, basically.
No, I don't think that's necessary. Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with that, but I don't, I think Reddick has a good point, you know, I think, I'd like to have the DA go off and look at that and make sure that we're not, and I know it's a resolution, but I don't wanna make a resolution that's contrary to something that would be in opposition, so my, my thought would be to table it until the DA's office is able to look at it. Unless you guys have a different opinion.
Well, yeah, I mean, this, they're not gonna do this tomorrow. I mean, they've got enough fights going on down there right now.
Yeah.
And this will be a.
I don't oppose it. I don't oppose the resolution at all because I think it, I think it still needs to do. I just don't want us to get crossways with something that, if they're telling the DAs that they're not. something that, if they're telling the DAs that they're not telling us, the commissioners.
It'll also need the county stamp on it, if and when it's signed.
The county stamp?
Yeah, the state of Texas, county of Eastland.
Are you talking about that letterhead or whatever?
No, she's talking about.
Are you talking about the seal?
Seal.
Yes, the seal.
All right, well, let's go.
I'll make a motion to table it, and then we can bring it up at the next meeting.
All right, all of us, favor say aye, aye, so we'll do that, that, we'll just put you on the, well, I think we'll get you on the next one, if that'll work, unless there's some time critical deal?
No, well, I mean, it is, but it ain't, yeah.
If you would, Becky, would you get a copy of that to Brad?
I'll hand deliver it.
And then that way he can, uh, he can see it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And just a bug in your ear, the JP moves.
I think the commissioners' court, from what I've been hearing, is that they want terminated, uh, storage.
For elections.
For everybody, storage for everybody.
Cause I, I really, I'm running out of room.
Have we got the, since you brought that up, have we, is there anything down there that, uh, state archives would let you release, is there anything outdated that we can move out of there?
Out of?
Your office? So I mean, is it all within the timeframe?
Everything is within, yes, sir.
Okay, well, it would, like I said, uh, increased storage would help anybody, so. All right, good enough, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I discuss, consider county's participation in the tax cybersecurity training program, I have no idea, is that you just do?
No, that is not me.
Well, I don't know who's.
It comes through your office.
Well, no, but what's it, why?
We have to do it annually.
So what's our option if we don't go attack?
Pay for our own.
Yeah, well, just.
I would recommend leaving the sheriff's office, the jail, and the dispatch office, that so y'all aren't charged.
We, I don't have y'all on ours, yeah, y'all are separate.
We do it to the separate.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you're not on ours, and the contract, then they're ready to go whenever you get a chance, it could be signed, it's already filled out.
Who's got that one?
You can have it, it's here.
Cybersecurity course enrollment?
It's ready.
I'll make a motion and allow the judge to sign it.
Okay, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, I guess we approve that, so. Where'd you go? Well, I guess y'all need copies of that, don't you? Uh, next is Jay discussing, consider updating the Eastern County Personnel, uh, policies and stuff. That's also, um, a, uh, a, uh.
Judge, I, I looked at it and I'm good with it, but I'd rather table that until we get James and Andy back.
Well, and Kathy.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that, I mean, I, I don't, I don't wanna speak for two half the court missing.
Right.
And there, and it's, I mean, I looked at it, I didn't see anything odd or outstanding on it, but I'd still rather have James and Andy back to do that, I'm, I'm making a motion to table that.
Okay, motion is second to table, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, close same sign. Uh, motion carries to table. Okay, uh, discussing, consider renewal of liability insurance coverage to TAC.
Uh, Judge, I apologize for my tardiness, I was on a medical call I had to take. Um, could we go back to a couple of agenda items before we move forward?
We did, we didn't do nothing up top.
Oh, you didn't?
No.
Okay.
No, we skipped, we skipped the four, we started burn man already because you weren't here.
Okay, and then on four C, um, was the res- the hardware declared salvage and the donation approved to the Dell.
I didn't read it after the donation, I thought it was destroyed.
Well, it is, but Goldsmith participates in the Dell, they actually donate it, Dell Reconnect Program, so, or it's going to be recycled and then donated.
Okay.
So I just need to make sure.
Jason said all this stuff was his, it's already been declared?
On C or D?
Both.
On both, it's already been declared salvage?
Long time ago.
Okay.
This is just stuff that I have, that has related to recycling.
Okay.
Been sitting in the car for a long time.
Okay.
Okay, so.
So would you amend it to participate in the Dell Reconnect Program?
Yeah.
C, which, C or D, or both?
On C.
On C. Motion to, to amend?
Yeah, to participate in the Dell Reconnect? In the Dell Reconnect Program, I'll, I'll make that motion.
Hang on a minute, why are we making this motion if it's already been declared either destructive, destructive or recycled?
And then we're donating it to the Dell Reconnect Program?
We're, we're, we're desca- we're dedicating what program it's going to.
Okay. All right, motion by Mr. Rains, I'm assuming the second by Mr. Wilson, all of us in favor say aye.
I just thought it was destruction, I didn't realize it was re- and recycled. I thought he wiped them all, controlled them away.
That's what I was told, that he was going to wipe every hard drive and, and completely destroy it and then send you a certification on the destruction.
We'll follow up with him on that if you don't mind.
It's, it's in their letter.
Okay.
Judge, did you vote on that?
Yes, yes, I did, um, I've gotta go through all the motions, second, then all in favor, and I go aye there for last, so.
Yeah. I think it was aye, 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 aye.
Okay, can we proceed on case?
I'm sorry. Um, on four K, I sent out, or it was in your documents, um, it's time to do our annual renewal of, um, our liability coverages. We've had them through TAC, Texas Association of Counties Risk Management Pool, I need to know if it is the desire of the court to continue with them. And if so, um, approve the questionnaire and allow the judge to sign it.
I'm good with that, I just had one question about the drone, it says it's not being used.
That is correct.
So why we have in, having cover insurance on something, we're not even?
Because we own it, I'm putting it on the schedule, if it's not being used, I, I don't know.
Broke or just not operated?
The batteries are real good, we need to buy new batteries and they're not cheap, and, um, we started down the path of getting, we all have to be drone pilots, we have to be certified.
Is this y'all's or is this DPS's?
We got it back from DPS.
You got it back from DPS, okay.
Yeah, they weren't using it either, they, they, they're all issued other drones now.
Yeah, yeah.
They weren't using it, so we got it back in anticipation, started our own, so we could have one. And we started down that road and we've had a bunch of other stuff happen in the last couple of years that has kind of, it's kind of got back burned.
Okay.
So.
I, I, I don't mind, I would just, that's the reason why I was curious of, of where it was and.
We've been using other, other departments, DPS and Cisco Fire Department, some kind of drone.
And we've had it covered since we purchased it, so I just wanted to let them know, we still have it, but it's not in use.
Okay.
So we wanted to put it in use, or what?
I, I still would like to have a drone program, we're still talking about that, we, uh, we use them a lot, actually, well, not a lot, but we use them frequently. And, uh, in fact, we used one the other day, um, from Cisco Fire Department out of Lake, so I, I still think the drone, drone, uh, program is important, but we've had more of work set going on. Would I have access to some others, other agencies that are willing to fly theirs for us every once in a while? It's an expensive machine to trash it.
Yeah.
Okay. So is that a motion to?
I'll, I'll make a motion, we stay with time.
And allow the judge to say.
Allow the judge, yes.
All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, most opposed next time.
So one thing I'm gonna ask you to sign too, because it's time dated and I need to get it to TAC.
And, obviously, even all the way up to the Supreme Court of the United States copies.
I, I understand, I just need to scan it and send it off when I get back to the office, thank you.
Okay, L, discussing, consider declaring emergency and establish the budget for US Forest Service, meaning wildfire defense grant, Ms. T.
Um, I passed out a little while ago, do you have one, Sonya? Uh, what was presented in court on the tenth, um, and basically it was my estimate of the cost for the personnel for the forest service grant. And, um.
She, she gagged it, did you get one? Just no, I, I got.
I, it was like four documents there, it was the last four pages that I just handed out.
I brought them up from last time.
Sonya, there's one for you. So we had discussed last time where I thought we were as far as fund balance and then the estimated payroll for the county wildfire, is it development grant? CWDG part of the grant? Um.
Wildfire.
Defense grant, uh, through the Forest Service. And again, I'll, I'll state that, um, my assumptions are that all positions begin work on February third, which we know they're not, but I want to have adequate budget in there. And all positions are new hires without longevity. And last court, it was tabled because I was also talking about the emergency management coordinator position, which that was budgeted in the fiscal year twenty-five budget. So I have that, but I'll go back to it under the budget amendments. So this is just to declare the emergency and fund the positions.
Okay, um, so, what about like the the computers and things like that?
For?
For the same folks.
And we, I guess the county's going to have to pay for all that because.
There's a million dollars in computer stuff in that grant.
Is there?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, and, 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 yeah, and supplies and stuff are written into the grant, plus, I. Go, well, I'll fix it, I'm trying to be political, David's not being asked, but it's gonna be out of the door. Without waiting for us to complete the equipment purchases, which I thought we was going to, they went ahead and made line item adjustments. So we've had our one adjustment on the grant, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know if we can get another one. So we have about four hundred thousand in equipment. I think that we can articulate it after we get this stuff done, equipment wise, and the purchasing the equip, the computers through that, that line.
Okay.
Or through the M and O part of it anyway. I, I don't know, I don't know for a fact that we're not gonna get another adjustment, I just know that they've already, one adjustment's been made. Which, said all along, if they just wait a minute, we're gonna be fine with the equipment with the budget that we had. They went ahead and moved some money. And we ended up being two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars under budget. Thought it was interesting too, the paperwork he sent y- y'all was what I did. I sent it to him and then he turned around and sent it to y'all. Uh, on the update, on there.
You know, my Coleman?
Yeah.
Yeah. They placed the rise the best.
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm good with it, but, yeah, they, they went ahead and made one line item adjustment. Already, I don't know if we'll get another one or not because of that.
Okay, and I.
The Cole, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, they went ahead and moved that, they, they, they did an amendment already on our, because he thought we were gonna be over budget on the equipment. Prior to her, purchasing the equipment, rather than just wait. So I, I don't know if we'll get another adjustment within that bu- within that, because he moved that, that out of the computer program side of it into the equipment purchase side of it. That's the reason why it talks about being four hundred and something thousand dollars under budget in that, is because that, that adjustment was already made prior to us purchasing the equipment. I do, like I say, I do think that we can buy the equipment out of there, the, the computers out of that.
No, I mean, there's, and that, that was supposed to be for computer equipment and.
Yeah, it's in the M and O part of it, we'll just, we can articulate in the purchasing that.
And that was even the design, my understanding, that was even the design, the software to keep up with all the.
Here's the other side of that, I asked him that particular question on the, the USDA software that Shelby sent us out the, the brochure thing on, and I said, well, who's gonna be the administrator so that we can see that to do the data entry? And he said Steve was gonna have to be the administrator for us, they could not, they could not do that. They can be a viewer, but they can't do the data entry, they can review our stuff we enter.
Yeah.
But Steve will have to be the administrator and then give us access to, to look at that. So when he gets on board, uh, the third, he'll have to go in there and, and designate himself as the administrator and then we'll all have to have a learning curve on how to do the data entry, cause if I enter it, it's gonna go to him. He's gotta approve it. And how this is gonna work, I don't know, because this is not how that software's set up. They wanted to go from us to the state and then from the state to the federal side of it. Well, it's set up in that, the best I can understand in reading that software is that, that is an entry point into the national stuff, so when we say send it, it's gonna send it to the US Forest Service for them, not to the state Forest Service. So I'm not for sure, to me, the way, if you wanted to go to the state to approve before it goes there, then somebody with the state's gonna have to be the administrator on their approval side of it.
Yeah.
In there, but I, I, I don't know.
More questions than answers.
Yeah.
I did have a conversation with Kevin Coleman, and specifically, the conversation I had with him was interest on financing the equipment and was the county going to want to be reimbursed for that? And I said, I wasn't aware we could even be reimbursed for that, he said, when we get to the end, they can do another adjustment and we can try to get some of this other stuff paid.
Well, and, and, and part of, and part of the other thing that is, is in his response to the Forest Service down in it, if y'all read it, it says something about reimbursement for county ma- county equipment and personnel used for the grant. He's assuming that if anything's left, if we use our, uh, mowers to mow, we can get reimbursed for that if there's money left. But they have essentially said no, but he thinks if there's money left. The other side of that is, is the conversation I had about the excavator with him, is they were point blank said no excavators on the federal grant side. So the reason why we took another little bit to get that articulated out is they take, it took more justification and we still haven't got their approval for the excavator yet, so I don't know how that's gonna play out uh, going forward, because he said in the, in the US Forest Service side of the grant, it says you can buy attachments, you cannot buy the excavator in there. So.
It's typical, typical federal government.
Yeah.
We'll let you buy all the attachments you want, but you won't anything to put it on.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Run them down the road.
Yeah, yeah, so that.
We got to hire like twenty-five people just to pick the thing up and run it down there.
Yeah.
And then make the noises.
Yeah, the squirrel to turn the cage, yeah. But anyway, that, we're waiting on that to come back too. I, I guess you seen the email that said you needed to sign those seven forms and send them on to the state forest service, correct?
I think so.
Okay.
I think that's what Shelby, Shelby. Did I, I've already signed that or, or you got that ready for me to sign?
The forms for the state foresters.
The FS fifteen hundred forms.
Okay. Well, print them out and I'll sign them after commissar's court.
But the, I do believe there, there's sufficient funds to purchase the necessary computer program or computer equipment.
Well, my question, my question for the auditor was, do we need to declare an emergency for that? As well, or, or we just declare an emergency to establish the, but when you say the budget, you were primarily talking about the.
Payroll.
The payroll.
Personnel, yes.
So does that cover that expense?
Um, and I guess the court can do what it's want, because I left it very vague as to what it was for.
Okay, well, then we'll leave it vague, because that's what we needed to do.
Yeah.
I think.
Well, I'd say I, and, and, and not knowing or understanding correctly now exactly how fast the reimbursements are gonna come. I mean, we, we, we're budgeting for the entire rest of this fiscal year. And we're dedicating those funds to that, however, I, I, I hope every month we get a, a check from them for the reimbursement, so that we're not out that, basically.
Yeah, no, that's, that's my hope.
Yeah. But.
I think that's also the hope of the cities, they're also involved in this as well.
Yeah.
Okay, so do we have a motion or don't have a motion? Where are we at?
So what I, what I've given you is the general ledger lines for payroll items, so if we need to add a computer equipment line item, we can do that also.
Is it, is the computer, I mean, I've got, I've got my coordinator saying, what am I supposed to use for, for a laptop? And so I've, I've gotta start that process pretty quick. The, the the, kind of the frustration is.
No, they don't.
There's no data to enter at this point in time, because there's no equipment that's been bought yet to do the work, to have the data to enter.
Right, so, well, that's not necessarily true, because that's where I got into my deal with him, is we're mowing. So that should count. I mean, every, every time Ronnie sends guy out to mow something, that should count toward the wildfire mitigation end game. The end, the end goal.
Not your front yard.
Yeah, yeah. So he, he said, he said, well, y'all are documenting that, and I said, yeah, we're documenting in the I-works, because we don't have access to any other program yet to document it. And he said, well, I think you can go ahead and document it in the I-works and then when we get everything up, you can go ahead and enter it into that, that database showing that you've done this, cause if you look that database up and look at what, I mean, mowing's part of what they're entering, controlled burns is part of what they enter. I mean, there, there's a whole gamut of stuff that they're doing toward the end game of those grants. And he, and that's brought up the, well, I think you can get reimbursed for that at the end if there's money left, so he, he wrote that into their e- that email going to the state forest service. Because they have initially said no on it, um, but, yeah. You, you, we need to track it, whatever we're doing right now, we need to track, because there is the possibility that we can get reimbursed for it. Do we need to? I mean, I understand declare emergency, do we need to set the payroll? Because the figuring like the equipment operators, that's not what we agreed to pay them.
Oh, I just went off.
No, that, one of the things that we had all along was we would not pay nobody higher than our roadhands.
Okay.
Uh, when it comes to the, the sawyers and the equipment operators.
Okay.
And that is more than our roadhands.
Okay, I went off the application.
Right, right. And, and we, we said all al- all along, even before they get all of that, cause they changed all that, we didn't. That we would not pay uh, grant personnel more than we paid our roadhands. Otherwise, we're gonna use, lo- lose our roadhands to this.
Mm-hmm.
In there. Um, so do we need, I guess my question is, is do we need to set the salaries first or set the, the, the hourly first for, for the positions? Before we go in further to declare the emergency? Or does that make sense?
Yes.
I would think we need to declare the emergency so that the funds, at least the line item is established.
Right.
And then.
Yeah, but you don't know.
Come back.
Yeah, but you don't know what the cost is gonna be, so you, when you declare the emergency, you're gonna have to say, this is the dollar amount for the emergency.
Nine million.
Um, we don't have that.
In there.
We're granted for nine million.
Yeah.
Make it easy.
Yeah.
Y'all get.
But, I mean, that's.
Too far in the weeds.
Yeah. Hey, well, if you cut them, I want that by God documented, cause I get to count that.
So we don't need, I, I guess my thought was, is, was to declare the emergency to allow, even though there's a question about the amounts, that we could declare the emergency, establish the account, and then the next uh, uh, commissar's court meeting have the updated amounts. Or can we just go ahead and move forward with what we agree was gonna be the salary uh, now and then have her adjust what she's presented to us?
And I can bring, if y'all will declare the emergency. Okay, and, well, that takes the whole court judge. Um, if.
So that works.
Yeah, if you'll declare the emergency and let me bring the emergency amendment back to court, but I need permission, because Steve Forbes is on payroll February third.
Right.
So I've got, we've got to have a pa- way for, I've got to set up general ledger so Lisa can get him in the system.
Yeah, but his sal- his salary's pretty much set. It's not him and it's not the specialist I'm worried about, it's the equipment operator and the sawyer.
Okay.
That, that I'm talking about, Steve's in, in the specialist.
Yeah, but I, I think, and I, and both y'all have been on this court long, long enough. But I think what I'm hearing her saying, what I was thinking is, is that we declare the emergency, it sets up that that budget line.
Yeah.
And then the only question we have is the, is the, is, is the two, the two extra hands.
Right.
And what you're saying is, I think what I'm saying is declare the emergency, set up the budget line, and then you'll come back with the revised
Right.
amounts, the next, uh, commissar's court.
Yeah.
Right, and the only other thing is, when Steve starts February third, he needs a computer, so.
Yeah.
I've got to have something established to purchase anything.
Well, being that if we go by this dollar amount though, if we, if we declare the emergency and, and say this dollar amount is for the emergency, you got leeway in there, because you're not hiring the other eight people anyway. So you could, you know, I, even though it's payroll, you could break it, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
You, you've got extra.
Up to.
Yeah, it's written in there already, that whenever you bring it back to, to a more uniform budget, that you could break it down into that.
Yeah, I can do that, if you'll, if you'll declare the emergency for up to four hundred thirty-six thousand one eighty-seven sixty-one and allow me to establish general ledger.
For how much?
Up to four hundred thirty-six thousand one hundred eighty-seven sixty-one, it's fourth page of that handout.
I will do the sixty-one.
Or just call it four hundred thirty-seven or four hundred forty, whatever you want, four hundred fifty.
That's sloppy.
Four forty. I'll, I'm, I'll make the motion to declare the emergency for four hundred and forty thousand.
Four hundred and forty?
Yeah. Second.
Third, all those in favor say aye?
Yeah.
Aye, motion carries. So, so we established it four forty, right?
Yeah.
And you're gonna come back and tweak the amounts?
Yes, I will get with Robert and get the amounts in, and, but I need to go ahead and set up general ledger.
Okay, constable precinct one, constable precinct two, racial profiling report, Jay Jerusalem, Daryl Dyer, in the house.
The racial profiling report's pretty easy, cause we're both exempt, because we don't stop cars, it's a normal thing of our office. Um, if you have any questions, holler.
Is that Daryl two? Is Daryl not stopping cars two?
They, they both say exempt.
Oh, okay.
I haven't read that.
And you don't stop or any?
But something that's.
You can make the noise, so.
Just to make y'all aware, to be able to fill out our racial profiling this year, we had to also sign that before they'd let us do it, that we are aware that there's new rules from TCO on what makes an agency. And, uh, there's a lot of just paperwork we'll have to do, but there's a few things that are gonna be costs that, uh, we'll have to come back to y'all once we get the cost and see if we can get some kind of amendment.
One of those is a bulletproof vest and what, what else, Jay?
Bulletproof vest, s- a non-lethal, uh, weapon.
It's a rock.
Yeah.
It could be, I've seen a rock be illegal.
I, I think we're okay, let me, I just asked Kane. A firearm per officer available, I think since we have our own there available, I haven't talked to TCO yet, but I think we're good, in fact, we're probably not gonna say anything, we'll see if we're good.
Yeah.
Um.
We, had, had you talked to the sheriff about potentially getting in on their
We're.
vest deal so that.
We're supposed to look at the vests that they've got.
Maybe get a bulk.
Right.
Discount.
And, um, and, and he said the, they're around a thousand each, so that, that's kind of what we're looking at price there. Um, the, the non-lethal, if, if we don't have to re-certify on them, we've both been certified on the expandable baton, you're talking fifty, sixty bucks. Um, the only other thing I saw in here that I'm not sure about, liability insurance from agency. I'm assuming.
We're already covered.
We're covered under y'all somehow, so. So I think that's, the, basically for the court, the, the bulletproof and the non-lethal is kind of what we're looking at, that uh, all of that has to be in effect prior to September one.
Of.
Of this year.
Twenty-five, right?
Right, and that, they, originally they were, said that the, that y'all had to provide us cars and, uh, between the judge and us emailing them and raising Kane.
I wasn't the only county judge that sat there.
Another judge, they said, no, okay, y'all got something worked out in the works. So.
Some, sometimes TCO just decides to do whatever they want.
Kim's still in charge of it?
Who?
Uh, the guy from Abilene, Kim?
No, no, he's gone, who's, who's in charge of it now? You remember, or no?
I don't remember his name.
I don't remember his name either.
But anyway, that, that's just an information deal for, for coming up. For us to, to remain an agency, even though it's a constitutionally authorized agency, so.
Yeah.
Oh, well. I'm not sure how the legislature would take that away, but.
Well, it would take the legislature doing a constitutional amendment with two-thirds of each house to get it done, so I don't know exactly how TCO figures into doing this, mandating this, but again, so I mean, we're, we're basically talking.
Probably talking about less than twenty-two hundred bucks.
Yeah. And that's just a, that's just kind of an informational only deal that we need to. I've entertained a motion to accept the racial profiling report as written.
Motion.
Motion by Ronnie, second by Robert, all those in favor say aye? Aye, okay, motion carries, alright, let's go to the consent agenda.
That's all you, Donna.
Oh, we're back in front.
Yeah.
No wonder y'all got so quiet.
We was waiting on you.
Okay. So, we'll start with the minutes. We have two minutes to be signed from January the thirteenth and January the twenty-first.
Okay.
We're not any.
Okay, were there any?
Things to be, okay.
Any personnel matters?
No, what does this mean?
Okay, um, see, on the budgetary stuff?
No. Um.
Certification of additional revenue?
Kathy has, yeah, she has received that, there are four. And there are four of them, okay.
Okay.
And then amended changes by funds, she's received those.
Yes, and I have more that I want to discuss, but if you wanna go through it, I'll come back.
Okay, investment report.
December twenty-twenty-four, just got that, yeah. Auditor's report and financial conditions, December the twenty-twenty-four and unreconciled, January the twenty-twenty, okay. Treasurers report, I don't have anything.
You should have the December report. It was emailed, you sent email with investment report.
To her, okay. Was it this morning?
No, it was Friday.
Friday, okay. I'll tell her. The financial report. Is that right, okay. Okay. And let's see. Department, departmental financial reports, she has the DMV. That's all she has.
I have joint elections also.
Okay.
Okay.
I can get you a copy.
Okay, okay.
Go claims and accounts.
There should be ten sets?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, do you have any certificates completion of Opens Meeting Act, Public Information Act, or cybersecurity?
I have none.
I didn't see any. Uh, and person acknowledgements?
I have none.
I didn't see any of those as well, okay, alright, Mr. Key.
Um, I will go back to, uh, budget amendments. Um, I also handed you this morning a page that looks like this, and it has item three C two at the top, and then there is a two-page document that has item four D at the top.
Four D?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're gonna, going to cover it under three C two.
Okay.
Um, the one for three C two is the budget for the emergency management coordinator. Um, I set it up during budget, um, this is actually a court's department line. I'm requesting to establish department zero-one-zero-five-nine-five-zero, emergency management coordinator and move the budget from this zero-one-zero-four-one-two-zero to zero-one-zero-five-nine-five-zero, which is emergency services. That, that five-nine-five-zero.
Okay, what was the other one you were talking about?
And then this one. This one right here. Under item four D two.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Okay, um, the and that was the destruction of the hard drives. Um, and I don't know if the sheriff planned to pay for that out of his budget, if they're all his. Um, so I guess it's.
He's not charging.
Do what, they're not charging you, even though there's a price on there?
Well, if you continue to look, it says he's not charging.
Oh, I did not see that. Well.
And if he does charge, maybe they'll bill the government.
Okay, so we don't need to have that part of the dis- discussion.
Okay.
Oh, it does say total due zero, okay. Um, and then on my financial reports and, I'm sorry, I could set up my computer if you want and go, or just kind of touch on.
Just touch on what we got.
Okay, um.
It said you don't have.
Oh, okay.
Cause it's like nine thousand.
Hey, dude.
It's tough to look at on your iPad.
Um, as of the end of December, the first section of the report is the statement of cash position. Um, general fund. Actual ending balance, all accounts for general fund, four million, four hundred forty seven thousand, seven hundred twenty nine oh one. Road and bridge, five hundred ninety eight thousand, three hundred thirty two dollars, thirty seven cents. The remaining funds are listed. And total general ledger balance, all funds on deposit for the county as of December thirty first, ten million, eight hundred eighty one thousand. Five hundred forty four dollars, seventy one cents. Uh, there is a statement of revenue and expense, the first report is county and it's showing revenue and expense by. Line item, there are one hundred ten pages of that report. And the next report is the statement of revenue and expense for state fun- funds, which is juvenile and adult probation. There are eight pages of that report. Balance sheet, um, all general ledger accounts with balances as of December thirty first. That report is seventy three pages.
Can, can, just for the sake of. I I'm, I mean, keep doing what you're doing, but is is there a way just to have like a summary sheet? Of those nine thousand pages?
Uh, and there is, I believe there is in the back of that report.
But I'll still have to go to that report to look at it.
Yes, yes.
Ain't taking long to grant.
I could scan the summary separately, if you'd like that.
Well, I just, I mean, when I'm, like I said, when I'm sitting on Sunday night and I'm sitting there going over all this stuff, you know, and I'm trying to access that deal, it's just like. Good gosh, I'm mighty, we have a summary sheet, obviously, if there was a question, we could go back to the.
Yeah.
Pull it up.
This is what I'm required to file with the court, but if you would like me to do a separate just summary, which would make it easier for you.
Am I the only one that's?
Nah, I'm the only one.
Challenged or?
Yeah, no, I, all I print is the first like seven or eight pages of that report, because that gives you the general. Idea of where we are financially. I don't, I don't print the other nine thousand pages of it.
No.
I think this is the first seven pages gets us through income and and the basic general lines on it.
Printing that is just putting money in all copies.
Well, yeah, and and that's our complete budget, basically. You know.
It is.
It it, and it'd be like printing the complete budget every month, which is, which is exactly what she's gonna tell us, but.
Yeah.
You know.
No, I just need the, I need the highlights.
Yeah.
Ronnie and I need the highlights.
For sure.
Okay, well, I'm still going to send you the link, but I will do a separate document with just the highlights.
That'd be great.
Okay, I'll be glad to do that.
No, thank you.
Um, the next report, and I believe Christina puts this in her packet, also is the management report. From First Financial Bank. And they are listing pledged market values for funds on deposit for the county. Uh, the market value, nine million, eight hundred fifty seven thousand, five hundred sixty six dollars, eighty one cents. Prosperity Bank also provides a pledged security listing and their market value is one hundred three thousand, seventy six dollars, eighty nine cents. Um, next is the budget comparison report, just for interest earned as of December thirty first. And Christina probably also has this. Uh, year to date, as of December, we have earned in all funds, one hundred one thousand, forty three dollars, ninety six cents. And same time last year, we had earned one hundred five thousand, nine hundred ninety five dollars, thirty five cents. Um, I attribute this in large part to the spending of the ARPA funds. Um, also lower fund balance.
Can we give Steve Durst what he needed on the?
I saw one set of minutes, he may need a second set of minutes. Well, I'll talk to you after court, okay?
Okay.
And the last report is the schedule of lease payments as of the end of December.
Any questions for the auditor?
Oh, the other report is I have the preliminary unreconciled report as of January twentieth. Um, and I'll just read the general ledger, uh, general fund and road and bridge, actual ending balances. All funds on deposit, four million, seven hundred twenty one thousand, one ninety one eleven for general fund. Road and bridge, five hundred seventy one thousand, two hundred seventy three dollars, fifty one cents. And then all funds on deposit for the county, eleven million, fifty five thousand, one hundred thirty seven dollars, ninety two cents. So it's a slight increase from the end of December.
The investment report for December, y'all should have that, um. We redeemed the OPEB CD in the amount of ninety thousand, two hundred twenty three thousand, twenty three dollars. We will reopen a new OPEB CD when we get the actuarial value. Um, we have two CDs in the amount of two hundred fifty thousand dollars at First Financial Bank. We discussed when the one in March redeems, matures, to redeem it and put it into the money market account. At First National Bank, which falls, we have one CD at Shirts Bank, we redeemed the CD at Texas Bank when it matured in December. One CD at Prosperity Bank, then we have the main market at First National Bank, which falls. We have the Texas class technical crime and tax pool accounts and the Texas class account for ARPA funds. Anybody have any questions over, I know we went over this last. Two weeks ago, so. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Report is made in accordance with the provisions of Government Code two two five six Public Funds Investment Act. Investments held in the recent county portfolio comply with the Public Funds Investment Act and with the county's investment policies and strategies. And this is your copy, thank you.
Thank you.
And then Laura pretty much went over the December report. My affidavit shows that the. As of December thirty first, two thousand twenty four, the amount of cash and assets in the custody of my office. Was nine million, two hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and three dollars and ninety four cents. And then you see the spreadsheet, the month ending bank account totals. The monthly fund balance report, which Laura has gone over with you. Then the interest earned for October to December twenty twenty three. Versus October to December twenty twenty four. Management report from First Financial Bank, pledge security listing from Prosperity Bank. And the debt. That's it.
Thank you, Christine, any questions for the auditor or the treasurer?
Oh, there are none.
I'll make a motion for the, the acceptance consent agenda.
Motion by Mr. Ray. Excepting by Mr. Whatever's named. All those in favor say aye, aye, motion carries.
So, would you make a copy of that for Donna, please? A copy for Donna?
Okay. Would you send me the new lines you set up for the payroll lines? Well, so, uh, we'll have them.
Yeah. Of course I would. Um, I still need to complete the payroll transfer with those lines too.
Okay, perfect.
I think Lisa has.
Awesome.
Awesome, awesome.
Awesome's awesome.
Thank you. There you go.
Thank you.
And Donna, I'll make copies of all the signature pages as soon as there's someone.
Y'all did receive my financial report in the email, correct?
Yes.
Okay. It should be in, it's in the email that had the bills and everything else.
Let them know that it's changed, not just no dumping, because then they're gonna get it.
Right.
So I put, we no longer accept brush or something like that, to let them know that there's no longer a burn pile.
Is there something we need to maybe put on the website or anything, is that something we can?
Numbers are going to be, and then.
Did your. Can we put something on the web, well?
Be going to do a notice in the paper, so you could just put it on the website. A public notice in the paper, it says, the precinct, free burn pile has has been eliminated. We no longer accept brush or any trash or dumping at precinct three barn. As of this day, then you can just put the same notice on the website.
Let me, let me ask you a question which I meant to ask while that was going, going on, I guess it got sidetracked, but. So, in the event that we had. Lord forbid, forbid that we do, that we have another issue like we had before with, you know, disaster down there. Can we amend that? I mean, I know.
That's a, that's, yeah, you can do that in the disaster desperation, you're talking about having a centralized location for debris.
Because, because.
We did that at Lake Leon, we had a central location for debris at Lake Leon, so, I mean, they didn't. They just took it to one location and the dumpsters.
Yeah, but TCEQ had to come out and approve the staging area, oh, it was a big deal.
Um, no, that that was my only concern, I I certainly don't have a problem. Because I think that things kind of grown its own legs, uh, but I wanted to make sure that we still had the authority to to, I I thought we did.
Yeah.
Is it something we have a disaster like that and we had to clear roads and do all that stuff, we had a central place that we picked up too.
And and the law does allow for like, for us, if we're not doing that, if we've got an adjacent landowner that has a burn pile. You can have an agreement with an adjacent landowners that, so you you can put that brush over here.
Cool.
Stuff like that, there is, there is, the statute does allow for, you can't, you can't create one, but if it, and it, and it says adjacent. Landowner that has the availability to allow you to stack that brush, you can do that.
Adjacent to what, though?
The road.
Okay, sure.
So, in other words, you can't pick stuff up, I can't pick, Ronnie can't pick stuff up and bring it over to a location in, in precinct four. Because that's, that's, it's just not feasible, but Ronnie's working on County Road one hundred, and somebody on County Road one hundred says, I know what, I know what you're trying to do. I've got a burn pile, you can put it right here, you need, there's just a little fill, fill out that says, they give me permission to stack this brush right here. You can do that and be safe.
That's good.
Yeah, but we can't pick nothing up, it's at the yard no more for ourselves.
Yeah, no, because how are you gonna dispose of it, you can't burn it. So, if you do that, then all you're creating is a hazard.
So, is that gonna cause you problems or? Do we have a pocket chipper or something or?
Yeah, yeah, we got one precinct two, we'll show you how to use it.
I think I figured that out.
Some of them, you know, you'll get these big old logs, trees that fell off in the road.
Some of them's too large for what we got.
Yeah, they're what we, I wish the county had a place where we could put our home.
Yeah.
Stuff and burn.
Yeah, yeah, some of the stuff's just too large for what that chipper is, a couple of reasons, the machine doesn't handle it, but also, we can't handle it. And personnel wise.
Yeah. Is there, um. I don't know, we need to think about this because I mean that.
Yeah, we're gonna run into that a lot, where trees and burnt trees are always falling.
Yeah.
Big trees.
You know, and the other thing is, I mean, I understand, I understand his complaint. Is it because of the amount of stuff that's coming in from. Tree companies and all the other stuff and and people throwing household goods out there. Is it, you know, that I would under, that that, I'm sure that it's been burning a lot, pretty regularly.
His main concern, I mean, Judge, it went for four days, straight to his house, and I'm talking seriously. He's on highway, he went there, he couldn't see.
Yeah.
Uh, man, I couldn't believe the smoke.
I wish there was some way to. Still be able to do our stuff.
Yeah.
We need a central location where we all put it there, we don't need another.
Yeah.
That's away from houses.
We need to stick.
Be careful with that kind of stuff, Ronnie, because that requires, it requires a lot more approval.
Motion, second, third.